It's a full show because he would like me when I get it, John, I come out with.
Hi, John. What do you think about the election?
Tough eight and a half months.
I'm so scared. If I can imagine you on it that day, what would you think? Jesus Christ.
I was having a family problem.
Well, Romney's not that great. Somebody of anything but.
Travel every day.
Romney is not a great speaker.
He's a great designer.
He's not a good thing. And this guy is so far from.
He's in love with himself there.
Yeah, and he's a very intelligent person. He's climbing over the goddamn rental.
But he thinks it's a good. He just comes across. I can't stand him, John. I cannot stand him.
And the other thing, he's got, he has, he has out campaigned as much as he has. You know, Romney will have to die for a good, for put man some. Well, he's so goddamn scared.
Some people say it's so close, but I don't. And I've got, I've got books, books, it's five, six books.
The time is 6:35 and we are now opening up the planning board meeting of 11:01, 2012. Roll call of the members, President Mike Gayhorn, Chair John Rinlett, Pat Roach, Paul Wilson, Dick Lewis, John Kelly, and alternate Brock Dragon will be voting member tonight to fill out the course. Are there any public comments from the public? I noticed that we do have some students here tonight. They'd like to, anyone who'd like to stand up and recognize themselves, what class they're here, you're welcome to at this time.
Hi, I'm Gray Brown in Hertha, and I'm in civics class, so I came here for a meeting so I can do my project, my project, and I'm building a building.
Anyone else like to sign up?
I'm engaged, and I'm the same. And I'm Ruby, and from the same civics class, and it's just the each project we have to do.
Right, super. Glad to have you here. Seeing no other public comments, we'll move to item number four, administrative matters. We have a deliberative portion of the continued application review, site plan review for Grafton County Economic Development Council Business Incubator at 149 Main Street, PID 109-021/023, continued by vote of the planning board. So we, Sharon, do you want to bring us up to date on what happened with the zoning board?
Sure. The zoning board met on Tuesday to review applications for special exception for setback and also a variance for height, and both those two items were approved by the board unanimously, so it's a green light in terms of any zoning impediments that might have been holding up this site plan review. So that was one of the criteria for continuing this process, and any subsequent approval, had they not had the opportunity to meet, would have been contingent on a positive outcome, but they've got the positive outcome. So tonight, we're back here. I believe the public hearing portion of the original site plan review was opened and closed. I received some additional information that you have a copy of from the towns engineer today. It's a brief overview of looking at the plans, additional information of the site plans that you have also in a very miniscule form, but Mike interpreted it for you, so you probably want to take a second to look at that.
Yeah.
And I think we were just simply at a place where you were having more discussion, whether you feel you need more discussion or not, leading up to your deliberative session is certainly up to you, but we're here eventually to take a vote on approval or disapproval for this site plan. That's it.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a comment on the engineer's report?
Yeah, just a question about it. I wanted to question the town planner, ask her if the response from the town engineer has been shared with the applicant.
Oh, should have been, but I don't know. You guys haven't seen it yet? Well, you can have my copy.
Maybe we could.
Ordinarily, they.
Take five minutes for the applicant to read. We'll read it during that time.
Good call on that.
The public can watch us read.
Oh, you know what? I think the HEB, Jay Poole, was speaking with Mike, not necessarily the architect, but it's just as well they have the copy.
Can I just ask you a question? Where the architect shows this dotted line that swings radius there, it's called the natural woodland buffer zone. Is that the same thing as the environment, yes, the environmentally sensitive zone? No? No, good.
No, I'm not even understanding.
I'm just not familiar with the.
Why that's there unless that was a carryover and a template from. Oh, oh, you know what it is? It's the shoreline. It's the shoreline. Shoreland protection.
Shoreland protection.
Yeah, and they did get their, yeah, they did get their permit. Yeah, because we don't have that downtown.
This says on it, natural woodland upper zone. Look out here, this spot says shoreline protection zone, that's 250 feet. So the 500 feet, our mentally sensitive zone would be halfway up High Street.
Right. Out of the realm of our consideration.
Yeah.
I just got a copy of that.
Today, the one guy coming down from campaign.
I think it changes the time. I mean, not that it's really important for us, but I understand. Very.
Two seconds, tenth of a degree.
Looks like just about everybody's finished reading at this point, so if the applicant would like to come forward and talk about the town engineer's report, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you. Again, my name is Stuart Anderson with Alba Architects, part of the design team for this project. If you'd like, I will just address the points as they are numbered in the engineer's report. Point number one discusses the runoff, and effectively, to my knowledge, it basically says that this will be addressed within the proposed project, and it doesn't particularly raise any concerns here other than stating fact, I believe. To point number two, the existing catch basin, yes, it is undetermined where that catch basin actually outlets. We are not planning to utilize that catch basin. There is another catch basin on site. We will be diverting drainage to, so anything that actually goes to that existing catch basin right now will remain intact and will be undisturbed by the project. To point number three, the plan shows no repaving of the alleyway or sidewalk in front of the alleyway between the proposed buildings. We will obviously recreate the surface as it is today and put back as good as, if not better than currently exists. There's a question on ornamental lighting on the south end, appears very close to the building. Yes, I mean, we plan to obviously go through all the fine details and illumination levels of all the lighting, and we'll happily submit that to you. Hopefully, we would consider that a contingent of approval from you that you would not actually leave that up front. Again, point number five suggests the same thing. It's discussing particular illumination levels. When actual fixtures are selected, we will halfway forward that illumination levels to you. Point number six discusses the depth of the footing. To be shown as three feet in the plan, four feet, we will, I believe that just to be a minor error, that it will be four feet below frost level, yes. And point number seven is the DOT application. We will be making excavation permit to DOT as we need to go into Main Street to actually tap into the water line that's out there. That concludes the seven points the engineer raised. Is there any particular questions on those I could address for you?
I don't think so, but we'll see if the board has any questions. Yes, Mr. Roach?
I have one question. On the repaving that alleyway sidewalk, have you considered impervious pavings? Not impervious, the other kind of pavement.
Pervious?
Pervious, so the water can so through as it parts, just running down that steep valley.
We could consider that. We haven't at this point in time. It was largely just to put it back the way it is.
Yeah.
The one area at the far end of the building. So I'm going to drop the site plan. The one area at this end where you can see the existing is a highlighted red. This area here, we will be looking, options to maybe put some soft landscaping back there that would be pervious, yes.
Okay, yeah, just, you know, keep in mind just to minimize, you know, it's a hill to run down and cause a more problem. Thank you.
On item number one, you said you would include the step back into your plan, or you, I'm not sure how you answered that.
Yes, there was an increased, the curb cut right there, yes, we plan to, the curb cut will stay intact on Main Street, but there would be a kind of slight elevation increase before it dips down the alleyway. It's a minor effort that we can make on our site to address the runoff coming down from High Street above, to try and keep it on Main Street and into the storm drainage at that point. We're very much aware that all the water that floods down there frequently floods the neighbor's basement, and anything we can do to alleviate that, we will try to do on our site, yes.
Would you say that's just a clerical error?
Yes.
From, from, we resubmitted, yeah, okay, so.
The only other question I have is that, the eight-inch pipe?
Yes.
You're saying you have a better system that you're going to be adding?
Yes, there's existing catch basin between the two buildings right now. You can see in within the catch basin, there is an eight-inch pipe that heads in this direction under this addition. No one, including the town departments, are aware as to where this pipe outlets. So there's another catch basin on this site, and we're making every effort to divert all of our drainage to this catch basin, which then outlets into the storm drainage system so we can actually control where it all goes. If, and removing this portion of the, if we can identify where that goes and address it, we certainly will, but at this point, it's undetermined, sort of demolishing the building.
So right now, there's two catch basins.
Two catch basins on site, yes.
And you're going to be just using, utilizing one of them?
We'll be utilizing one to divert drainage from the building. Anything that obviously comes down the alleyway will still go into the existing catch basin.
Okay.
But we're not impacting that scenario. The alleyway stays as is.
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Ah, somewhere along the way, I can remember, and this might not have to do with this project, but I remembered that the town of Plymouth, as far as drainage is concerned in pipes, the 12-inch drainage pipe was the smallest that the town of Plymouth would allow as far as drainage is concerned, and now we got an eight-inch pipe here. And as I say, I'm not too sure whether it has to do with this project, but it has to do with the roundabout and the, and that whole section down through there. And I just wonder if, if I'm incorrect as far as saying that any drainage pipe for groundwater would have to be 12 inches or bigger, and the reason they did that is because of Merrill Street. Merrill Street had a big problem, and at that time, they ripped it all up and said, well, we need a 12-inch pipe, and from now on, that's the only type of drainage pipe that we will install. And I didn't know how the state might have sidestepped that, or just, I'd like to look into that, because this project is going to involve all that stuff, believe it or not. It will involve more than right where that site is going to be.
The eight-inch pipe in question is obviously existing, and I would like to assume was approved by the town engineer at its time of installation. It predates our client's ownership of the site. It's a condition they've been handed. However, you know, should there be an opportunity to better that scenario, we would look to do that, but at this point in time, it is undetermined.
Right, but you're, you're using one of those, one of those pipes, right? You're talking about an eight-inch pipe?
That eight-inch pipe is existing that we are leaving alone. We don't plan to utilize that any more than the current conditions do.
Right, but the current conditions, if I am correct, should have had a 12-inch pipe to it. Maybe that would eliminate Plymouth furniture from being flooded every time it rains. So, you know, the time to strike is now, not after it gets all done, and then all of a sudden, they're going to say, well, you know, it's a good idea, you know, that's why they'll stay in New Hampshire, and an eight-inch pipe because it didn't have enough space to put in a 12-inch pipe, which if that is true, then it's an illegal drainage pipe.
Would that now have to be an undue hardship to our client to often address an issue they were handed either from the state or previously from the town's approval?
Well, two wrongs don't make a right.
I understand that, yes.
I think that's something that Mike Vignelli, the towns engineer, will be looking at in detail, you know, for the construction oversight, and if there's mitigation needed, it's not, let's just say, it will be looked at, but if it's something, John, that the state has neglected to do, I understand, excuse me for interrupting, but Mark, isn't the commissioner, Commissioner Clement coming?
He is. He's coming on the eighth.
Okay.
At 10 o'clock. We'll be looking at, we've got some other projects for him to look at on plenty of his side.
Right.
But I know that our neighbors and I are concerned about the water runoff issue, which is a state issue.
Right.
And you've been good enough to come over and look at that, and if there's other things we need to bring up with them.
Well, maybe this could be one of them. Have you invited our highway?
No, actually, but perhaps you and I could talk tomorrow and we could get.
Or Monday, or me, or somebody there to represent the board so we can just address this issue.
Could we have a reply on that in writing so that we don't just sort of let it float away into the, just accept the, what the, you know, solution of this is? Either it's nobody's problem or whatever, but I'd just like to have some, something in writing so that we would have something to lean back into.
Well, could we maybe somehow.
Well, add that into a condition that we address this. Right, well, we won't know, by the commissioner, I mean Commissioner Clement from DOT, which is November 8th, I believe that's a week from today, so that would hopefully have some redress by then, by the 8th.
I just seem to have a problem as politicians, especially at this point in time, of.
I think we're all tired politicians right now.
Not quite answering the question until it's forgotten about, and then they don't have to worry about it.
Well, he's coming, he, being the commissioner, is coming up expressly to look at drainage on both sides of the river in this area as it pertains to their highways, the state highways, so I'll make sure I go, if not Pete from Manic too, so I can report back to you.
So it appears that there are seven items from the town engineer that could be considered conditions to approval possibly tonight if we saw, if we are required to do that, and if there's a motion from the board, I'd love to hear it.
Mr. Wilson, I'm going to approve this application subject to successful resolution of the seven items that our town engineer has listed.
Seconded by Mr. Dragon. Any discussion? Mr. Rinlett?
There's nothing in there, item number two, there's nothing in there on the subject that John addressed about 12-inch pipe or 8-inch pipe.
Successful resolution, I hope, covers that.
Right. Okay, all right.
So it would have to be a resolution between the town and the applicant with the engineer's input, I would think. It wouldn't make sense to address it while there's a building down rather than waiting for it to go back up and then to try and.
I'll see if Mike Vignelli can, if it's all right, go to this meeting too, and then I won't have to try to translate.
If it's something that we do, we need to address ourselves. If it's not, then we will work with the town to petition the state to fix that.
Great, and I don't want to make it, I'm speaking just for myself, I guess. I'm sure there's an equitable way to solve it, equitable. So we have a motion on the, on the table. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Did you get a second?
Yes, Mr. Dragon.
Oh, okay.
So all those that would like to vote for the motion on the table to approve with the seven items as conditions to be worked out, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, so that has passed.
Thank you.
Approved. So that brings us.
Chairman, if I could just be bold enough, I'm looking forward to having you all close there for the grand opening of this, not development project, economic development project, so thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
So that brings us to item number five, correspondence. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly.
I have a question as far as this project paying taxes to the town. It is that way now, but is there any way that in the future, they can change that so they will not be paying taxes?
Well, no.
Yes or no?
Everybody has the option every year to ask for an abatement.
Right. I'm not talking about an abatement. I'm talking about whether they're going to pay taxes, whether it turns into a nonprofit organization or something like that. Again, with the politicians that I've heard and seen over the last few years, they will get something done, and then they'll walk back in the back door and find a way of not paying the taxes. So everybody says, yep, Pete, we got all those taxes we're getting in because of this building, and three years later, they say, oh my God, what happened to the taxes? I just would like to know yes or no. Is there any way that they can change the law to allow them not to pay taxes?
Wouldn't that have to become a 501(c) nonprofit organization to do that?
501(c) three.
I understand what a 501(c), but I, that, I'm asking that question. Can it turn into that?
Anybody can always change their tax status if they change the whole entity.
Mr. Dragon?
Isn't this a voluntary thing that they're doing? This is not required by law, and it's exempt anyways, isn't it, John? I mean, they have tried to change.
That's what I'm trying to say. Everybody says they're going to pay taxes, but if it's a voluntary type thing, next year, all of a sudden, all these taxes will fly out the door, and the town of Plymouth has got all those adventures.
It's not a law, though.
I understand that, but that could be, it could be part of the condition of whether to accept this thing or not.
Mr. Wilson?
On that, they're just doing it voluntarily. It's my feeling.
So I'm not sure whether that's, that's something the planning board can even tackle this issue. This is more of a.
The select board would have more of a say on that.
It might even be the state legislature.
We have, we have two selectmen here, so. I'm sorry.
If one of the selectmen would like to talk about it, they're welcome to. Otherwise, we'll move right on in the agenda.
Okay.
I just.
I mean, is, my remembrance is that during one of their presentations to the board of selectmen, they indicated that they would be paying taxes. I mean, obviously, one thing that goes into the consideration of, I mean, even 501(c)(3) owned property can't be subject to taxes depending upon what the use is and the conditions of that use. So there's a lot of issues at play here. I understand that.
All right, so that brings us, yep, thank you. This brings us to item number five, correspondence.
Add.
Okay, that brings us to item number six. I'm finished in other business.
Okay, I have handouts.
I'm fixing it.
Yeah, there's all the parts.
Well, yeah, I think like Sharon said, anybody can always apply for tax status.
It's all.
I was going to say, I should probably move. Actually, I'd love to come out into the sun so I can see this.
This is a paper, paper society.
Could I have the extras back, please? I've got to pass them this way.
Jesus. That's why you like me at the end of the tape.
I need the ones you don't. There you go.
Eventually, the nonprofit organization goes, going to go like this to the town of Plymouth, and the tax handout, they want to go like this. Pretty soon, people are. I'm looking for some other place. I don't know.
I can dial it out. We've lost a lot over the years.
Sure we have. It's because of the level. It's because of the level.
For your bedtime reading enjoyed.
It's all right. Everybody...
They never tell us where they're going to get the money.
I'll let Ray introduce himself. How's that?
Thank you, Sharon. Ray Gosney, I'm a resident here in Plymouth, and I've had the pleasure to work with the administration and the town's energy commission over the past year and a half, probably with the energy commission going back further than that even, on a proposal to take a look at the town's streetlights in a comprehensive way to address a lot of opportunities such as introducing the concept of dark skies, looking at the economics of what the town spends financially for the streetlights. You'll learn tonight that we have over 240 streetlights around town, and the main point of the night's presentation is to accomplish the introduction of what has come out of the energy commission and the work of the leadership of the safety committee and the approval of the proposals from the select board to move forward in a way that actually is going to reduce the cost of lighting overall when we're done in the town of Plymouth, and at the same time address a lot of the problems that we've had. And I'll say one example, how many of us have tried to drive up Highland Street at night, sometimes with the orange glow that you get from the existing high-pressure sodium lights there and not see a student in one of those crosswalks? That's one of the problems that we will be attempting to address here. The other is to, since you are looking at in your site plan regulations, the idea of making sure that all the lighting is dark skies compliant is to demonstrate that the town itself now is going to be installing streetlights that are dark skies compliant. Makes sense that the town ought to be doing the same thing we're asking our constituents to be doing. And to acquaint you with the newest LED technology that we're very fortunate that New Hampshire Electric Co-op began making available the first of this year. It's the only electric utility at the moment in the state that is making LED technology available. So I'll try to step you through some things here, and the idea, of course, is to not only acquaint the planning board with this information so you can make use of your site plan reviews, but to also educate the town's citizenry and businesses about the opportunities that new technology can have to improve, if you will, their livelihoods, both from an economical standpoint and also from the reliability, that's a key word that we use a lot with the LED technologies. Please stop me at any time, and I'm hopeful that I'll be talking fast enough, even with my southern voice, that we'll get through this in about 20 minutes. I wonder if I was going to have to reboot this thing. All right?
Button pusher?
No, it's froze up, I was afraid that might happen. Give me a moment. That's what happens when you try to get things set up, and Mike, if you could do me a favor, the two mics that are there. No, it's froze up, the computer has dropped.
That's all right.
Control, all, delete. You have them in the shirt. Those of us who remember every now and then, when you first started dealing with computers, you had to do what was known as a reboot or a cold start, we just had to do a cold start.
Does this eat into your 20 minutes, Ray?
Do what, sir?
I said, does this eat into your 20 minutes?
I'm eating into my time. Let me know how I'm doing here. Let me know how I'm doing.
Is that Tina Gethriss?
That's the summer toy.
Is that your car there?
That is. No, actually, that's my granddaughter's car. She owns the backseat. She lets me drive. Mr. Kelly has already pointed out that I have cut into my 20 minutes.
I'll hold it to you.
The objectives for the night in the topic is to use the convergent objectives to let you know what we hope to do with this project, to let you know that the insulation criteria that have spun out of the work of the select board with the energy commission and the safety committee, introduce you to the concepts about the efficiency and effectiveness of the new technology, to actually show you some of the technology that's in place now and the new LED, to let you know why now, why are we doing this now? Timing is usually very important in everything. The next thing is to give you an overview of the action plan over the next three and a half years, and to let you know that the town might be the first ones to actually do installations around town with LEDs. I'll show you a couple of other examples of things that went in this summer. The objectives of this project were to improve the safety of the town's streets and sidewalks, to improve the security of both residential and commercial premises, provide a more pleasing and reliable light. We want to minimize light trespass. Those of you who live in a residential area and have got one of these existing streetlights right outside your window, don't like it. We want to reduce light pollution, the idea of skyglow and glare. We want to lower the town's carbon footprint, that's the amount of energy it takes to run these lights, we're going to reduce that. And we want to control the town's streetlighting expense. Right now, for the current budget year, it's at $55,000. Last year was at $60,000. The idea is to continue to motivate a downward movement of that while improving the streetlights. The insulation criteria, when do you put a streetlight in? With a great deal of discussion that has ensued about this subject, this is a result of a lot of input from various organizations within the town. You've got a problematic intersection, you've got a high-volume vehicle artery such as Highland Street, you've got a street with an unacceptable history or risk of night accidents or near misses, you've got a high-volume pedestrian way or a crosswalk, you've got a high-risk area for crime or vandalism, and you've got public safety facilities which have around-the-clock operations. Three examples, fire police and highway departments here within town. Looking at the technology itself, the lights that are in place around town now are called high-pressure sodium, they give you that orange glow associated with that. And the conventional technology that's in place now only has about a 40% efficiency rate. And believe it or not, that 30- and 40-year-old technology here is far better than what was used before that. They were called mercury vapor lights, they were kind of a white-purplish color. These lights were actually twice as efficient as the old mercury vapor lights. It actually, as a result of this inefficiency, reduces the amount of luminums that you get on the ground, and you'll see a slide that'll illustrate that. If you look at LEDs, today's technology, not only do they have a far higher rate of efficiency, you'll notice at the bottom of the slide, they're only 10% inefficient, but they have what's known as a high CRI. That's a color rendition index. Those of us who are getting up in age and have a little trouble seeing at night, this lighting will improve our ability to distinguish features. It's got a high CRI. Why is that important? Well, we'll talk about Highland Street again, going up the hill by the post office, the new lights will provide a light that will allow us to see features far better than the existing sodium lights. If you look on the left, you see the existing technology up in the fixture head itself, where you have a bulb, and you only get about a 40% utilization efficiency of what you get on the ground. If you look on the right, you see the new LED technology, and that's got an 80% plus utilization efficiency. So if you look at the amount of energy that you have to put in to a fixture, whether it's the high-pressure sodium on the left, or the amount of energy that you put into the one on the right, it takes far less energy on the right to get the same level of illumination on the ground. That's important from the standpoint of cost over the long term because you're paying for kilowatt-hours. We all know what that's like when we look at our meters at home.
Ray, excuse me, I just want to understand, the legend at the bottom says lighting efficiency, what is that, 40 lumens per watt?
Per watt.
And so those are the same?
They're the same, but look up top. It takes 150 watt high-pressure sodium to be able with, to provide with 100 lumens per watt up top versus the 50 lumens per watt down bottom, 50% less. Plus the fixture design, and I'm not going to try to wow you with all that, but if you look at the fixture on the left, you notice you've got to bounce around the reflector, and also the globe underneath has to try to direct the light downward, whereas if you look at the LEDs on the right, they project straight down. So you get a far better input from the energy standpoint, and because of the design of the fixture itself, you get a far higher output on the ground. Combination of two things. Does that help, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
We wanted to put our toe in the water, we being the select board, before moving forward. So about two months ago, we replaced three lights out here on Main Street in front of the post office. We took down on the left what was there, the high-pressure sodium light. That one right there, and we replaced it with the new cutoff fixture, dark skies compliant. This one was on the, right here, was not dark skies, see the globe hanging underneath? We replaced it with three LED lights. We wanted to see if anybody noticed. Nobody did. Nobody commented on being worse or better, we just didn't hear anything. So it was an interesting experiment. Here's what happens with the existing technology. This slide is meant to cover a number of features on streetlighting that are very important. If you look at the orange glow that you get from the sodium vapor, you see the poor color rendition index that shows up right there. And you'll notice that you also have light right here that's being directed upward. That's called skyglow. That's something you want to eliminate when you require in your site plan reviews, dark skies compliant lights, you want to eliminate that upward glare. You also see direct glare that's occurring, and you get spillage and light trespass over here against buildings. If that's your home, that's what's coming into your bedroom window. If you look at the LED illumination, you don't have any of the upward light because it's a full cutoff fixture, you get a high color rendition, so you're able to see features far better. You have a low direct glare, and you have low trespass and spillage on buildings over here. So the fixture itself contributes toward a better level of lighting. Why do it now? Well, let's look at some things that have happened in the past year. The cost per kilowatt-hour in November a year ago was, on streetlights now, was 94 cents. In January of this year, that went down to 80, excuse me, not 94 cents, excuse me, 9.4 cents. It went down to 8.4 cents in January of this year, and it went down further in May to 6.8 cents, so the cost of energy is coming down. Also, as of January, as I've already mentioned, the Co-op no longer was offering high-pressure sodium outdoor lights, not just for towns but for any consumer within their service territory, and became the first electric utility to offer LED outdoor lights. The other thing that is driving our interest in moving forward on this is we're learning that the initial capital expense for an LED light is going to continue to trend downward. Right now, as you might imagine, new technology costs a little bit more than the older technology, but because of what's occurring with production capabilities, and also because so many towns and states, and you have a news article in there where Nova Scotia was required that entire province to replace all of their lights with LEDs. But you've got volume picking up and production costs going down. The fixtures that the town will be using are manufactured by GE. It's interesting that we've got a major manufacturer who's been in the streetlighting business that we've going to be able to work with here through the Co-op, who will be doing all the installation and maintenance, and they'll be working with Graybar Electric. Graybar Electric is one of the major distributors in this country of electrical and also communications equipment. So we've got a good supplier, and of course, these things are coming with all of the necessary approvals such as UL and a manufacturer's warranty. So even though it's new, it's not that new.
Yes, sir. They're supplied by GE, but where does GE manufacture them?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if you knew. I don't know. We'll get you the question back.
I think Ohio.
Yeah, I understand. What was the action plan for this year? Well, I've already mentioned part of it. We selected a small area to test the positive assumptions about converting high-pressure sodium lights to LEDs and to gauge reaction. And to do that, we went ahead with the three light installations, trying not to just do a singular light, but try to get an idea of what happens along the street when you have multiple lights that are in place. This is an idea, again, of what happened with the existing pole, that was the before, there's the after, and then there was two poles right across the street on the town common that were also changed out. Now, when you leave here tonight, my hope is you will notice the difference. This is a picture I took with the before of that area, and you can't really tell it here, but there's one of the existing high-pressure sodium, and the other one was relocated right here. But that's the before, and that's the after. And if I go back and forth, try to talk... And if I go back and forth, try to toggle real quickly, you notice there's far more glare that's taking place. And look at the light trespass on the post office building. Come back, there's the LEDs that are in place. Now, that camera shot of mine was done with my cellphone. It's tough sometimes. I probably should have used a better camera to so you got, if you will, a good, sharp picture. But you can actually read, when you're standing there, you can read this sign very well. You have a tough time reading a sign with that orange light. So the light quality definitely went up, trespass went down, skyglow went down. And the real advantage that you're going to see, there's the yellow, there's the white color. The bulbs in the high-pressure sodium have to be changed out every four years. Now, the way they fail today, some of them get fooled. They cycle. You'll go by, and the light will be on. You'll come back five minutes later, it's off. You come back five minutes later, it's back on. That's the way they fail. The other advantage is now with the LEDs over here, they have a ten-year life. Why is that important? It means the lights are going to stay on, and it cuts down on maintenance costs. You don't have to make as many trips in the middle of the night. Here's an idea again. There's the high-pressure sodium on the left. Features I've already mentioned on the right with the reduced light trespass, the glare and the skyglow. Here's where we get into reducing what's known as the carbon footprint, and that's the amount of energy that it takes for each one of these. The previous high-pressure sodium were four hundred white fixtures. They were replaced with a hundred and thirty watt LEDs.
Yes, sir.
May I have a question on the light? Is the ten-year life a manufacturer estimate?
Ah, no, that's actually been demonstrated with some of the earlier LEDs. There's a number of towns that have been doing LEDs for a while. They're actually using more than ten years, but we, in terms of the technology itself, but we'd say ten.
Right. What fails they do though?
The LED burns out, dies. And the way it happens, there's multiple LEDs in there, and occasionally one or two will go out, so you don't have to replace it until a number of them get down.
Right, right. Okay.
But notice the difference. You go from roughly seventeen hundred kilowatt-hours a year down to roughly five hundred and fifty kilowatt-hours a year to take care of that one light. So that means with those three lights that we did out there, that we reduced that from about, around forty-five hundred kilowatt-hours down to about fifteen, sixteen hundred kilowatt-hours. Just the three lights. And it's important from the standpoint of cost. It was costing us four hundred and forty-two dollars a year for each one of those high-pressure sodiums. Now it comes down to two eighty-seven.
How much?
Pardon?
How much?
Two eighty-seven.
Two eighty-seven.
Upon that successful test, and we were able to do that, we wanted to identify the streets that would provide good initial benefits in terms of safety, efficiency, and economics from converting sixty to seventy-five street and area lights in the fall of this year. The Energy Commission, and with great input, I should say, from the leadership of the Safety Committee, determined that the best way to take a stab at making a conversion was to look at a area and do an area conversion. You don't want one street to have one LED here and then a high-pressure sodium there. That just doesn't work. So we looked, they looked, there's an appropriate area that we can convert. And we found that this area that you see circled here, that essentially runs from the south of Highland Street, from Avery Street east, all the way down to Warren Street over the Main Street, including Main Street. If we were to convert that area, that provided the greatest concentration of the older high-pressure sodium lights. Most of those lights have been in place over twenty-five years there. There's a strong need for safety and security in this residential, all-campus housing area and along South Main Street. Think about all of the existing businesses that you've got here. It's interesting, that little symbol right there.
Top of that.
You've got a high level of vehicle and pedestrian traffic that's present in this area. We would be able to minimize the clashing of high-pressure sodium and LED lights, because in this area, we would change them all out to LEDs. And there's good conversion economics. Essentially, by changing this area out, we start saving on the town budget about two hundred dollars a month. So that's the reason we selected this area to move forward with. Continuing on, we want to engineer the installation of new lights, referring to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation roadway lighting design. Previously, lights just happened in town. They weren't engineered. They just happened. We want to coordinate with the Co-op to develop a multiple job orders to monitor each converted street to ensure that the improvements we're shooting for are being achieved. And we want to develop and implement with three and four, a communication actions plan that informs stakeholders of the conversion activities. And this is the first step of, or excuse me, I should say, the first action under step five, starting with the planning board. Going forward, we want to have the Safety Committee and the Energy Commission work with the town administrator and town planner to develop annual action steps to convert each spring approximately forty-five to sixty of the remaining town overhead lights. Got approximately two hundred and forty-some lights in town, and the Co-op's practice is to allow the community to change out about a quarter of its lights annually. There is a recommendation that has already been put forward to take a look for next year, and that's to finish up along Highland Street with that small circle area that you see over here, and then do this community right through here. This picks up all of Highland Street, all the way to Tenny Mountain Highway. Also, we would do the street going down to the elementary and the high school. And then there's some spur streets that are right off of Highland Street that have some lights in place. We would improve those also. Reason for doing that, that's the second highest concentration of the older lights. It already improves that high-volume area in the pedestrian traffic along a major artery, Highland. And since we're already going, starting south of Highland, it would eliminate the clashing. And we can use, again, we're engineering now, they're not just happening. All of the lights along Highland Street will have eight-foot arms on them. The ones that are there now only have four-foot arms. You don't have the fixture where it should be properly located over the travelway now. We'll improve Old Ward Bridge Road for the elementary and the high schools, and it will complement that initial phase one so that at the end of next summer, we'll actually have half of the town's lights completed. And it provides time to crystallize what you do with the rest of the town, the balance of the village zone around the university and Main Street, and then the commercial and agricultural zones outside the town core. We're also going to conduct research, and we talked about doing this starting next year, and actually, it's already been kicked off, along with the university, into the viability of converting the town-owned underground fed lights along Main Street and the common areas to LEDs. That technology is there. It's a little bit more expensive right now. We are going to be doing a test installation, if you haven't noticed, right outside Town Hall here on the corner. We had an incident occur where we had a vehicle jump the curb and took out the fixture right there at the corner of Town Hall. We are going to replace that fixture with an LED. And it will stand out, and it will clash with the existing lights that are out there, but it'll give us an opportunity to see exactly how well and how expensive the new LED technology will be for just one installation. I'm pleased to say that the university is already running some tests with some conversion kits on their several hundred lights that they've got around their campus that are the fourteen-foot poles with the lights on top. So there's a lot of work to be done here, but that's the real future, that we've got an opportunity to do that. It's going to be interesting. We're going to end up here shortly with the South Main Street going to have the new LEDs in, and then you're going to have the orange glow on the North Main Street.
How about the school, the elementary, the high school, the section of the change department?
Did you know this slide was coming up?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know this slide.
Good introduction. We're not the first to jump into this. This summer, had two organizations within town made the conversions. And if you'll notice, here's one pole right there. There's three fixtures. The entire parking lot for the high school was relit with LED technology this summer. And if you'll get a chance to take a look at that, that turned out very well. In addition to that, if you look at the hospital situation, there's the helicopter pad area there. They replaced lights and put on this pole here and this pole here, these fixtures right there, the LED technology, so that they get that white light at night in the emergency room parking and also for helicopters at night. So I wish I already started making these conversions. And this is what you're trying to get rid of, too. This is the pole right behind Penny Glass. Look at all the glare coming off those lights. And if you come over Ninety-three at night and you look at the town, especially once the leaves get off the tree there, look how we glow. Does not look good. Plus, it's also money going down. How did I do on time, sir?
Didn't even look.
Uh huh. Questions?
I was so intrigued by what you were saying.
You're too kind. Questions, sir?
I'm just really glad to hear that. I thought my eyesight was going quicker than I anticipated it was. Going up Highland Street at night, I can't see, you know, doing one of these things. But now I realize that part of that, I don't know how significant a portion, but part of it is that yellow or orange bounce. It's bad. It's scary, because you can't see.
Well, we do have representatives from the Energy Commission here tonight. We also had representatives from Gray Bar Electric and the Co-op in case there was anything that they could speak to. And I need to say that all this spun out of the interests of the Energy Commission. Street lighting was identified as one of the early-on projects, but it took a great deal of effort in working with representatives of the Energy Commission, the town administration, and the Co-op to do a complete inventory of the town's lights first. That was the first time that had been done. I want to say ever.
Everything sounds better, except maybe for the capital cost, but they have a longer life, so probably. Is the capital cost for installation, you said it's coming down, but did you give a direct comparison?
The figure that I quoted you for the first set of these some lights, that includes capital cost. The way that Co-op bills us, the capital cost is part of their tariff, so it's built into the monthly fees associated with that. They use a figure of forty-two hundred hours per year to compute the energy, and then they factor in the capital cost and the life of the fixtures.
So it's a time charge.
And if you look at their tariff, we save a substantial amount of money for the larger lights, the four hundred kilowatt hours, the smaller ones, excuse me, the four hundred watt, not kilowatt hours. The smaller seventy-watt lights, which are the predominant light that we've got in town, is going to cost us a little bit more initially. But we're also hopeful that, because we're going to put off a lot of the town's lights for two more years, that the cost of the technology will come down dramatically. Again, I gave you an article out of one of the New York newspapers in there that demonstrates the cost of the technology is dramatically coming down. So we're hopeful that that seventy-watt fixture cost, by the time we get to most of those in the town, will have come down.
But is there some other downside to this? Everything sounded good. I just wondered if there's other downsides.
We haven't identified anything. The key one that I and a number of us had was the concept, it's new. How well is it going to hold up? Well, they've been working this technology for some time. The fact that we're dealing with a major manufacturer, GE, all my concerns went away once I became confident A) it was a major manufacturer, and B) the technology itself has been recognized by the Department of Energy as the best in class. And we got the Co-op standing behind it. So we haven't identified any, but that's how we keep doing tests to find out. We'll keep testing. What we're actually doing, we're producing a database for the town. Each light installation, we're taking light readings before and after. So we're trying to make sure that we're getting the results that we're anticipating.
How much of all this is the university going to take care of? Because the biggest problem on Highland Street is students moving back and forth. And they really wouldn't have the safety element if you didn't have those students wandering back and forth across the street without talking. And the second thing is, how many towns around us, like Laconia, Franklin, have gone into this lighting program?
I'll introduce that in reverse order. Come back to the point that I mentioned earlier on. The Electric Co-op is the only utility that's making this available. So the other towns use Franklin. They're not able to avail themselves of that from their provider in that community down there. So it has to be limited to a community that's in the service territory of New Hampshire Electric Co-op. We are indeed one of the early adopters of this. There have been streets and locations that I've become aware of, working with Bill Johnstone, our Co-op representative, where they've looked at various locations within a town. But as far as I know, and I'll look to Bill to correct me, but my understanding is, we are the first town to move forward with a town-wide program.
Certainly of his size. The only other one that's close is Jackson. We placed about fifty incandescent lights, even molded technology, with the LEDs. And Conway has done a section of their town, mainly along the street if you're familiar with the outlets. That area has been done. I'm working with a number of other towns that are testing the technology, kind of like we did up front here. Put a couple in the certain areas of their town, Sandwich, Gilmanton, trying to think some of the other, oh, Andover. So it is starting to be pretty well adopted of in many of the towns.
I guess my big question is, we seem to have a flawed population count in Town Hummer. If you want to say that the town is the biggest around here, we use the sixty-three-hundred. If we want to find out actually how many taxpayers and so forth are in town, it's twenty-three-hundred, which is a lot less than even Ashland and all these other places. So the smallest town is the first town that gets into this, which is going to cost us initially quite a bit of money. Nobody's come to that point of what the cost is, but they do it by per kilowatt hour and everything like that.
You're saving, you're saving a thousand more fixtures out of a hundred and fifty. You're saving almost forty percent in your monthly cost.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I would like a hybrid car, and it probably would save me a lot of money, but it's going to cost me three times more.
Yeah, John, the short, direct your questions to me. The short answer is, there is no additional influence on the town's budget as a result of this project. All right. Got another selectman sitting right there to confirm that. So there is no concern about the capital cost. We looked at that, part of testing waters. The first question that you asked, and if you could restate that again, just to make sure I get it right. You asked the second question about the towns, but your first question again?
I was just wondering if the, since the college has enveloped both sides of the street, then in the safety issue because of the students, how much is the university going to put into the kitty?
The current scheme of things does not provide for the town seeking any reimbursement from the university. That is a town road. We certainly have a fair number of citizens in addition to the number of students that use that area. And I'm talking about the entire length of Highland Street, all the way to Tenny Mountain Highway. We have a responsibility to light that area because it is a town road.
The town pays for it now.
We pay for it now.
Probably fifty-five thousand.
And I quite frankly don't know how you would determine how to allocate cost between one constituent group and another.
I guess the way I would figure it is, prior to the university putting the two buildings, two or three of the bigger buildings on the other side of the street, the number of traffic count, pedestrian traffic count at that point, and how much there is now, is our, and at that point, I don't see why they didn't put light in to reflect that, because that safety factor has been in for at least four or five years, if not more. So there is a way of predicting. So there is a way of predicting when that actually happened. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not saying anything against it, but I'm just saying that the town seems to be getting on the chin all the time because of other people growing and you paying for it.
I'm sure the selectman sitting next to you has taken that all under advisement.
I mean, I think, I mean, as far as, you know, the efforts that are being put into relighting and modifying the lighting in the various streets, both the streets that everyone uses, both, you know, residents, college students, whatever. And I think the combination of the cost savings, the increased public safety due to the improved lighting, you know, sort of make it, you know, I think from the perspective of the Board of Selectmen, I mean, I think it was characterized as a win-win situation. So I mean, I think there are so many benefits, it would be hard not to take advantage of it. And this is a great program that the Co-op has initiated, and I think we're lucky to have them in the community to be able to take part of this.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dragon?
I'd like to thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Two questions. Why is it two phases? Is it because this is a long project and it takes that much time to set up all these lights? We can't, we have what, 300 some odd town lights, you said?
240 some.
Okay. Why is that not all done in one day and planned out accordingly? Is there some reason for that?
There was an initial inclination, especially stemming out of the Energy Commission, to move as quickly as we could to become dark skies compliant and take advantage of the energy efficiency capabilities of LEDs. What we had to come to understand was that the Co-op has got to procure at their capital expense, and this goes back to one of your things you were talking about, who bears the initial burden of the capital expense? It's the Electric Co-op. They have to purchase these lights. They're recovering their cost over a multiple year period through their tariffs. So when they looked at that, it became prudent to recognize that they needed to put, if you will, a, I'll put a throttle on it, on the limit of that, so they came up with, you know, it seems like reasonable to only ask a town to do about a quarter of its lights every year, so that we don't have dramatic impacts on our budget in any one year. So that's how it ended up being spread out over a multiple year period. It also enables us to do a better job of looking at individual situations on a street-by-street basis. I don't know how we'd be able to put the manpower if we were trying to do the entire town to make sure we're getting the results that we want. So it plays to our advantage also. When I say ours, I mean the town's.
My other question would be for the maintenance. I don't know what's involved in this, like they have to change bulbs. Frequently, how does that compare to the existing lights? Will the maintenance cost be more with the new LED lights versus the old one? I know there's going to be improvements in lighting and clares and environmental, et cetera. But what about the maintenance? Is it going to be twice as much to maintain?
Actually, the maintenance cost is dramatically reduced. Most lights that are in place now were designed to give you a fixture life of about 20 to 25 years. The bulbs were designed for a four to five year life, and the electric eyes, you used to hear up to 10 years. Many times have you gone by and seen a street light still going burning during the day? That's called a day burn. That's usually a result of the electric eye on top of the fixture that's failed, keeps the street light on. Well, as a result of the newer technology, the Co-op is on the electric eyes going to a 20-year life electric eye. And the LED component of itself only has to be changed out once every 10 years. So the maintenance costs are being dramatically reduced.
Thank you. That's very interesting.
I understand that the LED lights have been, for a better word, replaced by a more efficient light that lasts twice as long?
I've heard nothing of that. I'll look at Mr. Johnstone.
I'm not familiar with that.
I'm not familiar with anything.
I read it in one of the magazines, that it was the LED lights within a five or 10 year period of time will be outdated, and this new light, which has lasted twice as long but costs twice as much, will be the light of the future.
I would not be surprised if there'll be a change in the technology, just as you were about, oh, organic LEDs. Thank you, sir. They are very expensive right now.
Jim, have a question, if you want to.
Yes, sir.
When you got to this technology, are they able to be done by either the Co-op personnel or the town personnel? And are any of the materials, when they're removed, considered to be hazardous waste and require any substantial disposal measures?
I wish I had put that in there. No, that's one of the advantages, especially the interior, such as your establishment. If you were to move from where you may have some compact fluorescent lights now to an LED technology internally, you don't have those concerns. Bill, of course, has already been working with a number of commercial establishments here around town, such as the marketplace, excuse me, Market Street way across the street. All the lighting in their coolness is now LED technology. But I should perhaps have had that in the presentation. You don't have any of those concerns about disposal.
In the Co-op staff, does all the maintenance, our line and our training, work on the streetlights?
Thank you for all your time. I know I've made about 20 minutes.
Thank you, Ray. That was very interesting. All right. So that leads us to a discussion of Tenny Mountain Highway corridor study. Would you like to introduce this?
Actually, I've got a handout, too.
Oh.
I just, I deserve it. Ray? Ray, if you want that. Sorry.
All right. So what I passed out is already in here, but.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that.
No, no, you've got one set for notes, note table.
Just at the last planning board meeting, Sharon handed out, I think the flyer for a workshop that was held last Thursday down in Bedford. And it was on reclaiming commercial strips and downtown centers. And it was a presentation by Randall Arnt, I think it's pronounced, who's a nationally and actually internationally recognized landscape architect and planner. And he was a very thorough, very interesting presentation, which I thought was very linked into the whole Tenny Mountain corridor study and sort of what's happening in Tenny Mountain and what may happen in the future. Just a couple of highlights. One point that he emphasized several times is that he's done in different communities kind of visual studies where he shows, sort of testing visuals, photographs of different commercials areas. And most often, the areas that people dislike the most are the areas that were built per what the zoning allows, you know, sort of per plan, you know, which kind of demonstrates that it's not, it's not one community, but it's many, many communities that, you know, there's sort of a little bit of a cookie cutter approach, and that, you know, if you sort of look at what was well-used, you know, 150, 200 years ago in creating, you know, New England community centers and town greens and what's been done in Europe for hundreds of years, you know, a little bit more of a mixed use, sometimes even as a mixed use intergenerational community, you know, sort of community center, buildings closer to the streets, more landscaping, parking in the rear, you know, more of a walking community. You can have a much more vibrant downtown or vibrant commercial strip. One of the sponsors for this workshop was Plan New Hampshire, which is a nonprofit agency in the state that does planning shreets. And the community would apply to Plan New Hampshire, they would be considered, and if they were selected, then, you know, eight, 10, eight or 10, 12 planning professionals, architects, planners, engineers, sometimes economic specialists would come into the community and take a look at your study area, focus on it, have some listening sessions, talk about it internally, come up with options, then make presentations. And the executive director, Robin LeBlanc of Plan New Hampshire was there, and I asked her about Tenny Mountain Highway. She said, well, just by chance, we happen to be having an executive committee meeting the following Wednesday. This was the past Thursday. And she said, if you want to be considered for the next plan, for the next shret process, you know, get us something right away. So I just communicated with Sharon real quick, and then in the second page of my handout, which is the single page also that Sharon had, was a memo I put together to Plan New Hampshire. I made clear here that I wasn't speaking for the board, because obviously the board had not had an opportunity to discuss this issue at all. But, you know, what Robin said was, you know, again, to sort of preserve a good space and maybe get in the queue a little bit and kind of get your foot in the door, maybe ahead of some other communities, see if you can get something to us by Wednesday, all the better. So I put this together for her. The last page of my handout is just some notes that I made from that workshop session. Again, it was very thorough. He had probably hundreds of slides taken all around the United States and Europe, sort of highlighting kind of the best of the best. And, you know, I think we can, you know, people can kind of digest this a little bit, and we can talk about it more as we get into the corridor study. Since I was typing up the cover page where I just kind of highlighted a few things, and just added a few thoughts at the bottom, again, we can, you know, talk about that, you know, next time we get back into the corridor study and consideration of that. But again, kind of in quick summary, it was a very worthwhile presentation, and it just has so much linkage to what we're doing and thinking about from Tenny Mountain Highway. It just seemed like a good opportunity to, you know, communicate with Plan New Hampshire, and if we're lucky to be chosen, all the better. There is a fee, it's a $5,000 fee, it used to be a lot less. But, you know, again, a lot of professionals come in, devote their time, give their time, and there are a lot of expenses that they incur as far as putting together this, sort of the shret process and the booklet that they generate for each individual project. I mean, there are lots of options available to the town, and we could go with a shret, we could go with, you know, an individual planning consultant, could go with a firm. So there's, you know, lots of cost factors that could come into play.
I think, if you don't mind, I'll just add to that. Of course, the budget's not finalized, but I had been hoping to air, and I think this would, the way Paul Freitas and I spoke preliminarily, that it might go forward as a Warren article, but I believe we were looking in the ballpark of about $10,000 that I could pull from my budget. Now, this Plan New Hampshire is a wonderful organization. Because it's a bit pricey, or at least more than it used to be, I've never really dealt with them so much. I think what we're, in my opinion, what we're looking at here is sort of a two-step thing. I mean, this is the shret.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I close those doors? The sound coming from out there, I find is really annoying.
And Dick, I wanted to ask you, I mean, obviously, this is a shret, and that's a great way to look at, you know, the on-the-ground stuff, the what do we want to see, retrofitted? Do we want design specs implemented, created? But I think we also need that, you know, the aerial photographic analysis and stuff. I don't think these guys do as much of the absolute technical stuff. Is that correct?
Well.
You know, traffic counts and.
Well, they don't do traffic counts. I mean, I think they are, I mean, when I started talking to Robin about this, I mean, one of the first things she said was, you know, we don't like to get involved with a community that might spend their planning money on the engineers and the architects and the planners who are part of their organization, you know, basically, they don't want to take jobs away from, you know, lots of people that donate time to Plan New Hampshire in a broader sense.
I mean, the way, the way I see the, our corridor study, if you will, it is a two-step process. Theoretically, we could do the engineering part first and then take those recommendations, go to shret, or if this happened to come up, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, I just personally and professionally feel that we need the two steps. But this is a good opportunity to get. They do very good shrets.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, the outcome of their shret process in any community is not engineer drawing detail.
No, it's quantifying what the citizens want.
Yeah.
But we also need the engineering aspect, too, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and maybe, I mean, just one thought, I, sort of, on your comment, I mean, some of the, you know, the real detailed engineering stuff would come either in cooperation with DOT or with the developer of a certain project, and, you know, some of it would kind of, you know, relate back.
Well, we also, and I don't mean to belabor this, because I know you want to speak, but there's a lot of balls in motion right here. We continue to stay with North Country Council. They do have some unified planning work program funds through DOT, through their planning grants at DOT, where that's where you would get the more technical aspect in. So that's the other half, I think, of the whole, that's two pieces.
Yeah. There is, and I didn't bring any information on it, the workshop was held at the New Hampshire Housing and Finance Authority office down in Bedford. And Ben Frost, who used to be with OEP, works at Housing and Finance. And one of the things that they're doing, kind of in conjunction with OEP, is some comprehensive planning grant programs. And he indicated that another round of that is probably going to be coming out in January. So there might be some opportunities to get some, you know, outside planning money assist, you know, planning assistance money to implement some of this and to either do one step or two steps, or, you know, sort of look at it again in a macro sense.
Mr. Kelly, do you have a question?
Was this meeting only for planners and so forth, or is it for planning?
No. I didn't know if you were at the meeting where I passed the information out.
Yeah. It was open to anybody. There was, there was a mixture of planners, planning board members.
And it was evening down in Bedford.
Did we get notification of it?
Yeah, I attended either the last meeting or the meeting before that, I think. It was, one of the sponsors was the New Hampshire Building Association, I can't think of the right word. So the sponsorship and the attendance, you know, cut across a lot of lines. It was not just one field.
Do you have a comment or a question?
No, just a question. When I stepped up for a minute, I, you were in the middle of making a point, and I just wanted to understand.
Oh, oh, the point was, while not huge, I think our corridor study needs to be comprehensive. And in my mind, there are two components to it. I figured we'd only have money to do the technical aspect, you know, the aerials and the this and the that, the engineering aspect, and then sit down and try to hash out essentially a shret portion of it. But considering this Plan New Hampshire offer, it's basically a two-for-one. You get essentially two or three times the amount of money that you put into it, which is $5,000. You get that expertise in other people. So I just didn't know if we'd go A and B or B and A, but we could duke that out later on. I do think, I do think this is wonderful, but it's not sufficient for our needs. But that's kind of obvious, I think. In totality. Pardon?
Which one needs to come first? The engineering part or the?
I don't know. I don't know. I think, excuse me, I'm sorry. I think that it's, it's an on-the-ground analysis, an engineering analysis, and then the third part is when we all come back together and actually make the decisions on what needs to be done.
Mr. Kelly?
I honestly believe that we've got to have some professional go in and do the study. And in the long run, it's going to cost a lot less, because for the last, I don't know how many years I've been involved in this, but we get certain segments of Plymouth that like and dislike certain things, and they seem to be able to control what we are doing and so forth. As you can see on Tenny Mountain Highway, it's just a disgrace, a hodgepodge bunch of buildings. And if you had a so-called master corridor plan, then we could start with something. And then the other thing is, as long as we don't do like what we did with the fire station in higher somewhere in Arizona to try and tell us what we are doing in Plymouth, New Hampshire, if it's something that is, that we could. if it's something that is, that we could have as a territorial type of thing, which would include Plymouth, then I think we've got to have some kind of a master plan, and then after we decide what we want, then go in for the engineering plan, and that's it. It's like, it's like blueprints in a house. You don't wait until after you get the house built to find out what the blueprints are. And you don't even hire the contract until you find out what the blueprint is.
Right, and that's why this Shret, you know, that will essentially create the blueprint, or at least the initial blueprint, which usually always needs reworking.
Yeah. Mr. Wilson?
I have a really fundamental question for Dick. Is Shret the name of a group, or is this the name of the activity?
The Plan New Hampshire is the organization. It's made up of, I don't know how many professionals around the state, again, a broad spectrum of different types of professionals. Shret is, it's a, it's a planning tool.
Yeah.
It's a French term.
Yeah.
It's an old, it comes, Shret cart, I think, carrying maps, and it's an old term that's evolved to be across the board about this kind of getting together with.
So it's an activity, then?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, very interactive activity.
It's a facilitated local-level planning session.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought everybody knew that by now.
Is there any way that I could automatically be considered on going to any one of these meetings? I know sometimes I get busy and I don't read all the.
Well, you could always go till my budget runs out, everybody.
But you see, I don't know, I don't know what it is. Email, it was, I'm not too much of a fan of that, because you don't always read everything down, all the way down through if it gets mixed up, if there could be a natural, and I know a lot of times there is a natural notice saying this is what is going to be done, or a meeting is going to be done, so that, so that I could keep in contact with that and, you know, preliminary, not absolute fact.
Are you talking, John, if you miss, if someone's missing a meeting, the papers they get passed out, how would they get to you?
That's right, that's right. So if you send it out.
Let me talk to Sharon about that, maybe after the meeting, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
I just, excuse me, I just found a definition online. The word Shret is a method of organizing thoughts from experts and the users into a structured medium that is unrestricted and conducive to the creativity and the development of myriad scenarios. It consists of an intense period of design activity.
Does it have a French origin?
What I'm guessing is they would come up with some drawings, not necessarily that might fit the engineering aspects of the property, but some ideas, and then maybe try and make that then fit what our pictures and our maps.
Yeah, I mean, we did, we did a Plan New Hampshire Shret in Franklin for some downtown transportation improvements, and kind of it's a, you know, it's a very intensive sort of two-day process, and kind of at the beginning, kind of, you know, maybe at the beginning third, they're drawing on paper and painting with a very broad brush, and kind of at the end of the process, it's still a little, it still has some broad brush characteristics to it, but the brush starts to get a little bit finer.
You get a little consensus, generally.
And would there be any chance that this could take away the downtown aspect, the downtown feel? No.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I think this plan, I think the board and certainly the selectmen, you know, Tenny Mountain Highway is a little bit of an economic engine for the community, and, you know, we're seeing more growth, and, you know, I think one of the, one of the thoughts I put into my memo to Plan New Hampshire was that I think everyone wants to see Tenny Mountain Highway developed, you know, responsibly, in attractive fashion, you know, environmentally sensitive, so that it brings in more people and brings in more development, because that's going to be a good thing for the town.
I think tax-wise, that if you took Main Street and what you receive in taxes there and what you receive in taxes out in Tenny Mountain Highway, you'd better start considering Tenny Mountain Highway is not the redheaded son of Plymouth.
What do we need to do with Mr. Dragon?
Seeing there's no public here, are you the public? Any comments? I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Was, I think that's a good idea, but are you looking for any, are they looking for any direction from the planning board before we?
I have not, just given my week and the storm and everything, I have not communicated with Plan New Hampshire. I assume, given the weather, I assume they have a meeting on Wednesday, so I can, I can, I'll email Robin.
So this was the placeholder, more or less?
More or less, yeah.
So if we, you got a sense from the planning board that you love this idea, or that you don't want you to talk to Robin anymore, or what?
That's, that's up to the board.
Mr. Chairman says I can vote. I'll give you my sense. I like the idea.
And I was going to say that I think to have an intense design activity with a lot of ideas presented to us, it seems to me that that cost is really pretty low for the town.
It is, it is.
And, and I'd like to see us, it doesn't mean we have to accept it all, but as a, as a starting point, and obviously to be augmented later by detailed engineering work and then input from the town and so forth, I think it's a great opportunity.
We have to get to this point anyway with the engineering detail, and it's much better to have a facilitated endeavor with, with, with the experts, with architects.
So I would say if we want to expedite this meeting, that we would say this board is very interested in hearing more details about this, and we would probably even recommend to the, to the selectors. We recommend that, that the planning board likes the idea, and if they could do something to facilitate it, that'd be great.
Yeah, certainly incorporating something into the budget cycle.
Well, that's the thing, yeah, it's fluid, it's the time.
Should we, should we as a board do this, or is this, as I understand, the job definition of the planner is that they are the ones to, to attend all these things and find out what the community, you know, the master plan of the community and master plan of corridors and stuff like that, and I don't know whether it's the members that should be attending these meetings, or whether it should be the planners.
I'm sorry, which, which meetings, John? You mean like these workshops?
No.
Oh, a Shret?
Out of Bedford, yeah, and so forth.
Oh, well.
I don't know if we really know how.
I go to a lot of them. I couldn't go to this one, that's why I'm glad Dick did, and you, that's why we try to disseminate, because within my budget, you all have the opportunity to go.
But there seems, seems to be a chain of command down through, and the way I read it is that Mike is the authority during one of these meetings, and you are there to assist him and give him any technical information. But overall, community activities, that you are the one that is supposed to be facilitating and everything like that, so that I just wondered if, if we should individually, whether it's me or anyone, whether we should go out and go to these meetings, or whether it's you to go to a meeting, and then through Mike, tell us what those meetings are.
I would say both. I think there's a, I mean, that's my primary responsibility, but I think it's a great educational component.
Is there anything more unique from us, Dick, on this?
No, I can, I'll, I'll email Robin at Plan New Hampshire and just sort of find out what happened Wednesday.
There's a lot of interest with the planning board.
Yeah, and find out what the next step is, and there's a formal application process and, you know, kind of the meta I put together could be enhanced and beeped up a little bit, and could be accompany the application and.
I'd like to have some time to read this before.
I mean, the other thing that anyone could do, I mean, they've got on their website, which is just Plan New Hampshire, dot org, I believe it is, if you just Google Plan New Hampshire, it'll, it'll come up, and you can go on their website, and you can take a look at examples of what the Shret, what the outcome of any of these Shrets are. They've done them, you know, they've been doing this since mid, mid, early nineties, I think.
I hope they want to design Laconia.
Oh, God, no. I think the river designed Laconia, and the automobiles.
We got one more agenda, I have, which is, we don't have a vice chair at this point, because Rhonda didn't step down, and so you have a chair, but I don't know if this board would like to make a nomination, and then we can move forward to select one of those.
It's important, because if you're not available, then it really gets in. I have to run the meeting, and then it gets weird.
Well, there is a process. There's the longest serving or something like that.
Right, but.
But I think we should have a vice chair, and if someone would like to nominate one, we have a, so we can have both officers.
Are you willing, oh, are you willing to be the chair?
I prefer not.
Chair, I'd like to nominate John Randlett to be vice chair.
And he was before, wasn't he?
He was, so he's pre-trained.
Yes. I thought he was experienced.
So we have a, we have a nomination. I don't know if that's a motion.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Is there any other nominations?
Is this going to affect you if you get elected as far as being representative about being here at meetings?
I got a great chance that I'm gonna.
But I'm just saying.
No, no, I, I'm concerned about both.
So we have a, we have a nomination, we have a second, is there, so there are no others at this point? Okay, so are those in favor of John Randlett serving as vice chair, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? No? Okay, so vice chair now, Mr. Dragon?
Can make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye? You got it?
Then you have a substitute.